Good evening. At this time, we will ask that our board members please take your seats. Welcome everyone to the Lafayette Parish School Board's regular meeting of January 8th, 2020. We will open tonight's meeting with the pledge led by Ms. Mary Morrison, followed by a moment of silent meditation. Please stand.
And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to begin this evening with a few important reminders for our parents. For those interested in applying for one of the magnet academies, this is a reminder that the deadline is Wednesday, January 15th at 11:59 PM. The lottery drawing for all grade levels will be Thursday, I'm sorry, Tuesday, February 18th, 2020. A parent education series will be conducted by the Lafayette Parish Sheriff's Office to provide important information regarding threats, bullying, terrorizing, and for our middle and high school parents, some discussion about vaping. The meeting for elementary school parents will be held Thursday, January 9th at 5:30 PM at Branco Elementary Auditorium. The meeting for middle and high school parents will be held Tuesday, January 14th at 5:30 PM at the Lafayette High School Auditorium. The Lafayette Parish School System Early Childhood Coordinated Funding Request is available on the LPSS website, January 6th through January 15th, for public comments to be submitted to the lead agency. For questions or public comment, please contact the Lafayette Parish Early Childhood Network at ECnetwork@LPSSonline.com. We have several students and school groups throughout the district who continue to excel, and I'd like to recognize some special achievements this evening. Congratulations to the Acadiana High School Wreckin Rams Football Team as they completed an undefeated 15-0 season with the 5A State Championship after an 8-3 victory over Destrahan on Saturday, December 14th. This is Acadiana's first state title since 2014. Their first state title since 2014, and their fifth overall. Congratulations. On December 17th, it was announced that David Thibodeau STEM Magnet Academy Students Brendan Douillon, Weston Simon, Jaden Huvall, and Kaylee Biancini are the overall winners of the 2019 Congressional App Challenge for the Louisiana's 3rd District. The team's app titled Happy Bites is designed to help with suicide prevention and connect individuals experiencing depression with local resources. Congratulations to those students. Carron Crowe Middle School is in its second year participating in the Fuel Up to Play 60, a national in-school health and wellness program launched by the NFL and the National Dairy Council to promote healthy lifestyles among school-aged children. Already this year, four Carron Crowe Middle students have earned Fuel Up to Play 60 Student Ambassador by earning 30,000 points by reporting healthy eating and physical activity accomplishments. These students will also have the chance to attend the Fuel Up to Play 60 Summit this summer. And finally, we would like to congratulate dance team winners from our district who competed at the Dance Team Union Regional Dance Competition last week. The Lafayette High School Lionettes placed first in the Varsity Jazz Division and second in the Varsity Hip-Hop Division. Como High School placed first in the Varsity Palm Division and fifth in Varsity Jazz Division. Acadiana High School placed fourth in the Varsity Jazz Division. Congratulations to all of these teams. This concludes my comments, and at this time, we will have the swearing-in of board members. Mr. Louis Perret, Clerk of Court, will do the honors.
Thank you all very much. It's my great honor to be here tonight to do what seemingly is mundane to many people, but it continues the great tradition in our country of the peaceful transition of power, not through the ballot, but through the ballot, power of the ballot box. And so, we will proceed with the swearing-in of each of the school board members. I will call you up one at a time. You're welcome to bring your family members, and then your Bible. You will kiss your spouse, hopefully, when you're done, and then come sign the official book, and you will be official. And I would like to start with Mary Morrison if you would come up. Do you, Mary Morrison, solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution and laws of the United States, the Constitution and laws of Louisiana, and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon you as a member of the Lafayette Parish School Board, according to the best of your ability and understanding, so help you God?
I will.
Congratulations, Mary. Congratulations. You're gonna sign right under "So Help Me God"? Tommy, just stand right here and face me. Dorothy, you gonna hold the Bible?
Yes.
Okay. Place your hands flat right there. Dorothy, push in right here. You have to keep it close to him. Dorothy, you wanna get on this side by Tommy? Alright. Tommy, if you please place your left hand on the Bible. Look at me and raise your right hand. Do you, Tommy Angel, solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution and laws of the United States, the Constitution and laws of Louisiana, and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon you as a member of the Lafayette Parish School Board, according to the best of your ability and understanding, so help you God?
I do.
Congratulations, Tommy.
Thank you.
You're gonna sign right under "So Help Me God"? Alright. Thank you. Congratulations. Mr. Elroy Bruce Hart, please. Alright. I'm gonna hold this for you. Do you, Elroy Bruce Hart, solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution and laws of the United States, the Constitution and laws of Louisiana, and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon you as a member of the Lafayette Parish School Board, according to the best of your ability and understanding, so help you God? I'm not gonna kiss you. Congratulations. For him, son. Alright. Right here. And you're gonna sign right here under "So Help Me God"? Thank you. Congratulations. Dr. Timmy Chassault. Stop right there. Come forward a little bit. You wanna hold the Bible for us? Come stand right here. Put both your hands flat. Face me. Come face me. Just don't drop it, okay? Alright. Come in right here a little bit. How you doing? Alright, Timmy, if you're ready, if you please place your left hand on the Bible and raise your right hand. Do you, Timmy Chassault, solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution and laws of the United States, the Constitution and laws of Louisiana, and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon you as a member of the Lafayette Parish School Board, according to the best of your ability and understanding, so help you God? Congratulations, Timmy. Happy for you. One more signature. And you're gonna sign right under "So Help Me God"? Right there. Okay. Congratulations again. Alright. Britt Lachele. Stand right there. Face me. Right there. Who's gonna hold the Bible? Okay, I gotta do it on this side.
They're not holding it?
Okay. House full of people first time. Less people next time. Y'all are gonna have to take one step to the right, because he's gonna have to hold that hand. Okay. Alright. Britt, if you're ready, if you please raise your right hand. Do you, Britt Lachele, solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution and laws of the United States, the Constitution and laws of Louisiana, and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon you as a member of the Lafayette Parish School Board, according to the best of your ability and understanding, so help you God? Congratulations, Britt. Britt, I need you to sign. It's government. You have to sign everything in triplicate.
Yep.
Okay. Right here under "So Help Me God"? Yes, sir. You're gonna hold the Bible. Okay, you're gonna stand right here and face me. Hold it. Just like that. Okay, you're alright. Stand right there. Okay. Alright, Justin, if you're ready, if you please place your left hand on the Bible and raise your right hand. Do you, Justin Santani, solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution and laws of the United States, the Constitution and laws of Louisiana, and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon you as a member of the Lafayette Parish School Board, according to the best of your ability and understanding, so help you God? Congratulations, Justin. Okay. Thank you. Justin, right here, sign. That's right. One more time. Your sign right here. Kate Bailey Laboue. Kate, you're gonna come right here. Face me. Who's gonna hold the Bible? Gonna hold it? Both hands flat. Come towards her. Right there. You wanna stand right here? Alright, Kate, if you're ready, please raise your right hand. Do you, Kate Bailey Laboue, solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution and laws of the United States, the Constitution and laws of Louisiana, and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon you as a member of the Lafayette Parish School Board, according to the best of your ability and understanding, so help you God? Congratulations, Kate. Happy for you.
I'm a lawyer.
You'll sign. Under "So Help Me God"? Alright. Thank you. Alright. Hannah Smith Mason. Hannah, you're gonna face right here. Walk forward. Who's gonna hold the Bible?
I'm gonna hold it.
Alright. Hold your hands up. Just like that. Don't drop it, okay? Alright. Hannah, you're ready? If you please raise your hand. Raise your right hand. Do you, Hannah Smith Mason, solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution and laws of the United States, the Constitution and laws of Louisiana, and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon you as a member of the Lafayette Parish School Board, according to the best of your ability and understanding, so help you God? Congratulations, Kate. Don, you're gonna step right here. Okay. Who do you want to?
He.
Hang on to it, okay? Okay. Who wants to hold the Bible? Somebody's gotta step up.
I'll hold it.
Alright. Come step right here. Face me. Hold your hands flat. Just don't drop it. Like that. Come in right here. Alright. Alright, Don, if you're ready, if you place your left hand on the Bible and raise your right hand. Do you, Donald Aguilar, solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution and laws of the United States, the Constitution and laws of Louisiana, and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon you as a member of the Lafayette Parish School Board, according to the best of your ability and understanding, so help you God?
I will.
Congratulations, Don. Write under "So Help Me God"? Congratulations again, Don. Okay. This includes my part of the ceremony. I would like to thank you very much for having a Bible on hand. Congratulations.
Ms. Troskla, I'll take one last privilege here and tell the family members joining us this evening that we would love to have you stay and experience the meeting with us, but we would not be offended in the least if you feel it necessary to step out right now. So, please, if you feel like you're going to go home at any point tonight, this would be your opportunity.
You might have another meeting, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Perret, and congratulations to all board members and their families. At this time, at this time, I will open the floor for nominations for the position of Board President.
Madam Superintendent, I nominate Britt Lachele to be Board President for 2020.
I thought Britt said he's second. Britt didn't say second? I thought he said it. Oh.
Are there any other nominations on the floor?
Madam Superintendent, I move that the Board close nominations and elect Britt Lachele as Board President for 2020 by acclamation.
Congratulations, Mr. Lachele.
Alright, now, let's see what you got. Let's see what you got, now. Come on. Gotta bring my A-game. I wanna thank my fellow board members for allowing me to lead the school board for the 2020 calendar year. I am sure we'll have a very clear vision in 2020.
I had to do it.
I had to use someone else's, so Amanda Blanco has graciously allowed me to use her, so they're not, they're not very stylish. What we'll do now is open up nominations for Vice President. Mr. President, I'd like to nominate Barry Morrison.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Ms. Mary-
I accept.
You accept for Ms. Mary Morrison, Vice President? Are there any other nominations for Vice President? Hearing none?
Mr. President, I move that the Board close nominations for Vice President and elect Mary Morrison as Vice President for 2020 by acclamation.
Second. Congratulations, Ms. Mary Morrison, Vice President. Next on our agenda will be the information items. Item 2.1 is a Love Our Schools presentation. Mrs. Santani?
Mr. President, tonight, we have Mr. Ryan DiMaggio, the General Counsel for the Kip Schumacher Foundation, here to present some information about the Love Our Schools Initiative for 2020.
Do you have to put this mic on?
Yes, sir.
It's on. There you go. Thank you for having me here today. I guess it's been a few months since we joined the board and talked about Love Our Schools, and I will tell you, it started as a coffee shop conversation back in December of last year. I'm still overwhelmed at what happened. We had nearly 3,000 people show up in support of nine Transformation Zone schools in this parish, literally in one day, perform 100 service projects. We raised $1.3 million. We expended about $1.15 million of that on different projects. We packed 5,000 book sacks for all of the students at the Transformation Zone schools, and by "packed book sacks," I mean, they had the exact school supply list in their book sacks that they needed, so every child started the school year equal this year, and with all the supplies they needed. It was amazing to me, the groundswell of support from the community that came out to these nine schools. In fact, around 12 or 1 o'clock at each one of the schools, many people were walking up saying, "What's next? We're done with the projects." And we're talking about 600 gallons of paint, 15,000 bottles of water, the logistics of 3,000 meals to the 3,000 volunteers, t-shirts. We still have projects that are ongoing right now, new playground equipment at Carron Crowe Heights, a 5,000-square-foot deck put up at Carron Crowe High School, and I could go on and on and on. What you have in front of you is a box that contains our annual report, and it looks like this, and it's, it looks like a composition book. And in that report, when you take the time to look through it, you're gonna see the faces of our community that showed up that day to help these schools. And what is tremendous is that we expended the monies, the $1.1 million, and I would estimate return to value of probably double or triple that back into the schools when you talk about the return on having 3,000 volunteers show up and the monies that we spent on the actual materials themselves. 750 teachers, faculty, and staff were celebrated on August the 12th in an event that I will say I've never been a part of before, and I would tell you, the people who went there will say they've never seen before, where these teachers were launched into the school year feeling supported by their community and in a way that helped to, I think, accelerate some change in the schools. One of the quotes from Ms. Quahle at Carron Crowe High School, as I stood on the deck with her the first day that the kids showed up at Carron Crowe High School, one of the first quotes that came out was, she said, "I didn't think a deck could change a school, but I'm pretty sure it did. We had less fights, less discipline issues in the, in the start of the school year." We heard the same thing from some of the other schools as well. Acadian Middle that has a brand-new set of bleachers where parents don't have to sit on the ground anymore. They actually can be respected and sit in the bleachers that they deserve. I'd invite you to look through the whole annual report, because it has photographs. It documents all of the projects in great detail. It has a thank you to the community, and I will tell you that what we have done has just begun what we are gonna be committed to. Next year, we're in the planning phase already of touchpoints with all of the schools, all of the faculty and staff. With the launch next year, that's gonna be even bigger and better than what we did with the Transformation Zone school, faculty, staff, custodians. And I have to tell you, I am humbled by the support that we received from this school board, each and every one of you in your own way, and from the administration and the schools themselves. It is unbelievable. You know, even as late as this Thanksgiving, as the kids left to go on break, when they came back, there were 600 brand-new lights in La Rosen Preparatory that were established where these kids walked in and could actually see that the walls had been repainted, and that the faculty lounge had been redone, and there were murals on the walls that had been repainted, and we're gonna be covering the walls in the gym because it, they deserve that level of attention and a facility that they can be proud of. And so, we're planning out next year. There's a lot more to come. We've already raised hundreds of thousands of dollars already, and we hope to even implement a program in coordination with the administration and the schools where we start to bring the communities together with the schools and give them a portal to direct access to aid, assistance, volunteers, and the materials that they need so that these kids can feel loved and that they can accelerate their academic achievement. So, any questions, Ms. Troskla or board? I'm happy to answer. Okay. Thanks again.
Thank you, Mr. Troskla. Appreciate it. Thank you to Love Our Schools. Next on the agenda is 2.2, Dr. Timmy Chassault's Annual Toy Drive. Dr. Chassault?
Thank you, Board President. I would like to take the time to thank a few people and a few schools. Every year, we get together with various schools, various organizations, and we try and help out as many kids as we can with Christmas toys. It's a monumental task. It's a task that I tend to lose my mind over because I try to help so many folks, so many people, so many kids. And this year, I wanted to personally thank Southside High School, Lafayette High, Broadmoor, and Ernest Galette. When I say these, these schools go above and beyond what they have to do, because they're helping out kids that they've never met before, kids that they may never have a chance to meet, and those kids, on the basis of a free dress day, take the time to come, come to school with a toy. They donate it. The schools round up all the toys. They make sure to get it to us, and with the help of those four schools and local businesses, we were able to help over 400 kids with their Christmas toys this year, and it's one of the most amazing things that you'll get to witness. Some of the kids from Southside actually took the time to come out and see what we had going on at Falk that day, and to see these kids' faces, how they were amazed, that kids walking in and seeing toys allure and getting their choice, whatever toys they wanted. It was the, was the best feeling for me to see those kids so appreciative, and we were able to help kids at Branco Elementary, JW Falk, Alice Boucher, Evangeline, Assen, Charles Burke, Dusson, and SJ Montgomery, along with a number of families. Some folks had lost loved ones recently. Some folks had lost their homes in a recent fire, and we were able to help so many kids. And just really quickly, I'll end it with that. It's, it's the Christmas spirit of, of seeing a little girl come in the JW Falk's library and select three toys, and in the three toys she selected, they were all different. And on the last toy she picked, she said, "Oh, I'm gonna get this Paw Patrol for my little brother." So, when everybody hears it, everybody's like, "Oh." So, they bring it to my attention. I go and I speak to her. She tells me she's got a little brother in second grader at Falk. She's a fourth grader. She's got another little brother. So, then you look at her toys and notice she picked the My Little Pony, a construction truck, and a Paw Patrol. So, the kid took the time to give up one of her three toys. So the kid took the time to give up one of her three toys and chose two other toys for her younger brothers. Well, then you call the little brother out of class to see if he had a chance to pick some too. The little brother comes in there, and as I'm talking to him, he can't see his sister. I explain to him what his sister had just did, and when I moved out the way they could see each other, they ran up to each other, they hugged each other as tightly as they could. When they finally released their embrace, she looks up at him, she looks down at him and says, "I got you a Paw Patrol." He looks up at her and says, "I got you a My Little Pony." So at that point, we all realized, see, that's what Christmas is about, giving to others. And she was willing to give up her toys, and he was willing to give up his. So safe to say, they left with a trash bag of toys. So I really appreciate everyone from the bottom of my heart. Oh, I almost forgot, Central Office. Every year, Central Office puts together toys. Somebody should have just waved their hand at me. Like, every year, Central Office will give me a call, and even though I'm a little worried, like, man, you know, we're gonna have to go and buy some more toys, which we just do. My mom helps out. She buys toys year-round on discount. We just find them, buy them. Oh, they're, oh, they're $3? We'll take them all. People at Walmart look at us like we're crazy. We just, we'll take them all. And Central Office always comes through right at the last second. Jennifer Gardner called me, Ms. Trossler called, "Hey, we got a bunch of toys for you over here." I'm like, "Oh, God, thank y'all so much. We appreciate it." So from the bottom of my heart, I appreciate y'all, and thank y'all.
Thank you, Dr. Chasson. Next information item is 2.3, Human Resources. Ms. Thibodeau, do you have any introductions this evening?
Good evening. Tonight, we have three introductions. The first one is the new Assistant Principal at Alice Boucher, Sarah Gro. Ms. Gro earned a Bachelor of Science and a Master of Education from the University of New Orleans. Ms. Gro has served eight and a half years in the field of education. She has spent five and a half years at Falk Elementary School, where she taught special education, and then was promoted to the instructional leader position. Ms. Gro was awarded JW Falk Teacher of the Year, Lafayette Parish School System Elementary Teacher of the Year, and was a Louisiana Teacher of the Year finalist. Congratulations to you, Ms. Gro.
Members of the Board and Superintendent Trossler, I would like to take this moment to say thank you for this opportunity. I am truly grateful and appreciative to be able to serve students in Lafayette Parish. I would like to thank current and past mentors for supporting me and for allowing me to continue to grow as an educator. I would like to thank Ms. Marcel for the opportunity to join the Bobcat family, and I look forward to working alongside the Alice Boucher community. Thank you again for this wonderful opportunity.
Next, I would like to introduce the new Assistant Principal at Milton Elementary Middle, in Middle School, and it is Heidi Ferris. Ms. Ferris earned a Bachelor of Science degree at UL Lafayette and a Master of Education degree at Louisiana College. Ms. Ferris has 20 years of experience teaching. She has worked in St. Martin Parish, Allen Parish, and Iberia Parish. Also, she has taught one year at Dusson Elementary, as in, as in her 12th year of teaching at Green T. Linden, where she taught fifth grade and kindergarten. Ms. Ferris has served as a mentor teacher, lighthouse coordinator for Leader in Me, and was an LEF Teacher Awards nominee. Come in, Ms., come up, Ms. Ferris. Congratulations.
Good evening. I would like to thank the Lafayette Parish School Board for the opportunity to serve Milton Elementary Middle School as our new elementary assistant principal. I would like to thank my past administrators for their encouragement while I fulfilled my goal of becoming an administrator, and for their shared wisdom during my internship. Thank you to the Milton administrative team, faculty, and community for their heartfelt welcome and unwavering patience as I grow professionally. Lastly, I would like to thank my family for supporting my decision to obtain my Master's in Educational Leadership while continuing to teach full-time and raise three boys. I am very excited to have joined the Milton team. It's an honor to be part of a school, community filled with enthusiasm about education, and a faculty dedicated to the success of every student. As the elementary assistant principal, I will work to support students both academically, socially, and emotionally. I believe in the potential of each student, and I look forward to supporting the students, staff, and community of Milton. Thank you.
Next, I would like to introduce the principal at Edgar Martin Middle School, Amber Oob. Ms. Oob has earned a Bachelor of Science and a Master of Education degree from UL Lafayette. Ms. Oob has 19 years of experience in education, working with middle school students, teachers, and parents. She taught ELA at MP Moss Middle School and Scott Middle School for seven years. She then became the instructional leader at Scott Middle School and served in that position for seven years before being promoted to assistant principal. Ms. Oob was Select Teacher of the Year while serving as a teacher at MP Moss Middle School. Congratulations on your appointment, Ms. Oob.
Good evening, Board, Superintendent Trossler, and your staff. I want to say thank you for allowing me to lead Edgar Martin, giving me the opportunity. I want to say thank you to my family, who always gives me the support, to my many colleagues over the years who have mentored me and inspired me. I did not get here alone. And finally, to the Ram family for welcoming me and making this endeavor a very easy and smooth one, and I look forward to the many great things that we have to show the community. Thank you.
Congratulations to all our new administrators. And Ms. Oob, let me personally tell you, Scott Middle will miss you, but congratulations. Before we start our consent agenda, if the public and the board would allow me, to take a second to present on behalf of the Board and the Lafayette Parish School System, an award, the past president, Mr. Justin Centany, for the fine job he did in leading us in 2019. You did, you did an exceptional job, great leadership. We appreciate your time, your commitment. It's a pleasure to serve with you on a second term, and if you don't mind, if we could go up front, if someone could take a picture, our photographer has left, we'd like, as a board, to present a little token of our appreciation, sir. Now, ladies and gentlemen, we'll move on to our consent agenda. I'll read the items. If any board member chooses, they will pull the item, and, of a discussion. Everything else will be left intact, and we'll vote in global. We'll start with the agenda. 3.1, Discussion and Our Action Concerning Resolution 01-20-1969, Acadiana Wrecking Rams Football Day.
I'd like to pull 3.1.
3.2, Adoption of Resolution 01-20-1970, Recognizing Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Holiday. 3.3, General Fund Budget Revision Request for Athletics Cost Cen of $14.56.
Pull that, please.
3.4, Discussion and Our Action Concerning Notice of Vacancy and Solicitation of Applications for Superintendent of Schools.
Pull that, please.
3.5, Discussion and Our Action Concerning Approval of Bids for Running Tracks at Three High Schools. 3.6, Discussion and Our Action Concerning Approvals of Bids for Lafayette High Football and Band Practice Fields. 3.7, Discussion and Our Action Concerning Approval of Budget Revisions and Self-Funded Construction Fund 45 for Acadiana High Press Box. 3.8, Discussion and Our Action Concerning Approval of Bids for Acadiana High Press Box Replacement. 3.9, Discussion and Our Action Concerning the Sales Tax Collection Report for November 2019. 3.10, Discussion and Our Action Concerning the Grant Fund Summary for December 2019. 3.11, Discussion and Our Action Concerning the 2019-2020 Second Quarter Budget Revision for Applicable Funds. 3.12, Discussion and Our Action Concerning Budget to Actual Reports for December 2019. 3.13, Discussion and Our Action Concerning Proposals for Internet Service. 3.14, Discussion and Our Action Concerning Proposals for Wide-Area Network Services. 3.15, Discussion and Our Action Concerning the Minutes of December 11, 2019. The items pulled are 3.1, 3.2, 3.3, 3.4, and 3.5. Mr. Angel?
I'll make a motion that we adopt all of the items not pulled.
Second?
We have a motion by Mr. Angel, seconded by Ms. Morrison, that we approve all items not pulled. Is there any public comment on any item that was not pulled? Now is your time to speak. If you'd like to speak on any item that was not pulled, come on up to the podium, please.
Hi, my name is Scott McMahon, representing Hunt Telecom, Unity Fiber Company, related to both the RFP responses for the wide-area network and the internet. In the last, first of all, it's been a pleasure to be the telecommunications partner and provider for WAN connectivity for the parish school district for the last five years. I just wanted to make a couple of comments based off of some of the comments and concerns in last month's meeting. I believe one of the concerns related to the separating out or expansion of the tabulation criteria for the decision-making rubrics, and I think what the panel was attempting was to further define the, the items under that section related to the technical merit of the proposal, so that each vendor could, could tell what they were being graded upon. I believe in Section 4.1, there were 10 items listed that were to be graded upon, and four were basically pulled out and expanded and given individual grades or scores, simply because those four items were scoreable. The rest of them were either yes, no questions. So, I think the other thing that was brought up last week was, excuse me, last month, was related to telecommunications experience by the vendors who submitted RFP responses, and I believe, and if I'm not mistaken, that specific vendor experience is more related to the school district's experience with that vendor, more so than telecommunications experience in general. Of course, everyone who responded to the RFP has telecommunications experience, but I believe the scoring rubric was graded in such a way that the district had, or the district's technical staff had a relationship with both their WAN provider and their internet provider, and they somewhat graded their performance over the last five years. So, I think if the district were to decide to throw out the bids and put it back out for bid and wait another 28 days, that it opens the door for not just the, the four responses to come back from the original bidders, but possibly multiple other vendors, and, you know, just elongate this, this timeline. Two more things, and I'll stop. Of the two RFP response that were tabulated and scored by the district, the WAN connectivity and the internet were actually scored highest on behalf of Unity Fiber. I can see where the internet RFP scores were close enough to possibly consider putting that RFP back out, getting further clarification on the decision-making rubric within that RFP, but the, the RFP specific to the WAN and the tabulations that were provided to us after that are not necessarily all that close, and if, if we could suggest if you were going to put, you know, one or the other out, or both, if, if only the internet would be pushed for another 28-day cycle, we're wondering if that would be a consideration. And also, I believe an opportunity was given for a one-on-one meeting with the IT Director to discuss how, how the grading was handled and where they were graded deficient or proficient, and just wanted to see if we would also have that opportunity. And I would be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Any board members have any questions? Do we have any other public comment? Yes, ma'am? Or, sir? Try, try to limit it to, please, three, three to four minutes on comments, please.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Alex Berhasko with Jones Walker on behalf of Unity. I think a couple of other comments we wanted to make is that, just a concern about the timing of this. And, you know, as far as the federal funds that are going to come along with this RFP, it's a very tight timeline in March, and so we just have some concerns whether this will be the way that it's going right now, whether it will be graded, voted on, and then actually the contract actually issued in time. I think everything would have to be absolutely perfect to even get close to that. So that, that's just some of our concerns that, that we want to bring up as well.
Thank you. Any more public comment? Come on up, ma'am.
Thank you. I'll be brief. I'm Joan Dubison with Cox Communications.
Yes, ma'am.
I was here last week. First, let, let me say that we did not have one-on-one meeting with Mr. Spencer. We communicated only via email. We would just like to say that we agree with the decision, the recommendation of the school board attorney, that the RFPs should be put back out for rebid. Cox agrees with that, and we also continue to impress that we feel like the scoring matrix was changed. We feel like we were scored unfairly on the experience. We've been a proud provider for the internet service for Lafayette Parish School Board for the past five years, and so I just wanted to be on record that we agree with the decision to put the RFP back out for bid. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes.
If, if I may, could I pull that, could I pull that item?
You can, sir. That would be 3.13 and 3.14.
Yes, please.
All right. Those items have been pulled. Do you maintain your previous motion?
Yes.
Ms. Morrison? Are you okay with, with the motion of removing these two? Okay. Thank you. Any more public comment? Any board member comment? Hearing none, Madam Secretary, I'll call for the vote.
Nine, four, none against.
Motion passes. We'll move on. Item 3.1, Discussion and Our Action Concerning Resolution 01-20-1969, Acadiana Reckon Rams Football Day. Ms. Morrison?
Yes, Mr. President. I move that the board approves Resolution 01-20-1969, declaring January 10, 2020 as Acadiana Reckon Rams Football Day.
We have a motion by Ms. Morrison, seconded by Mr. Angel, that the board approves Resolution 01-20-1969, declaring January 10, 2020, Acadiana Reckon Ram Football Day. There is a resolution to this. Coach Jeffers? I'd like to recognize Coach Jeffers. He'll read the resolution. He is our athletic director, former Reckon Ram.
I thought you was always a Ram.
Always, he is. I did say farm, I take that back. We'll confirm that later. Go ahead, sir.
Board President Lachale, board members, Superintendent Trossclaire, once a Ram, always a Ram, Mr. Santani.
I just wanted to hear it.
Can they come up front?
Sure. Coach McCullough, your staff, any players, parents, family, Mr. Lejeune, everybody.
Resolution 1-20-1969, whereas head coach Matt McCullough and assistant coaches Kyle Sebo, Jordan Romero, Cedric Figaro, Clay Corche, Kevin Bellard, Alonzo Williams, Ryan Tab, Connor Bro, Trey Sutton, Ronald Gunner, Jimmy Himsel, Cade Dawes, Drew Bergeron, George Harris, Justin Ligon, Mitchell Vidreen, and athletic trainer Kyle Longson have built a program that continues to be the measuring stick for programs throughout the Acadiana area and the state of Louisiana. And whereas the Acadiana Reckon Rams dominated opponents at Ted Davidson Field, at Bill Dodson Stadium, and on the road en route to the first undefeated 15-0 season in school history culminating in the 2019 Class 5A State Championship to go along with winning the District 35A Championship. And whereas the coaching staff taught the importance of teamwork, perseverance, self-discipline, determination, and integrity under the leadership of head coach Matt McCullough and staff who have gone 26-2 in the last two seasons with two district titles and one state title. And whereas the team defeated Benton 78-28, Walker 49-0, Airline 34-7 in the quarterfinals, avenged a loss from the previous season to Zachary 21-14 in the semis, and statistically dominated Destrahan 8-3 in the state championship game while averaging 38 points and allowing only 10.4 points per game during their historic run. And whereas the 2019 state championship victory continued a tremendous 15-year run for the Reckon Rams football program that would see them appear in seven state final games, winning five state championships during this stretch. And whereas the Veer Machine set records of 82 points in a single game, 685 points on the season, for a 44, 45.7 point-per-game average, over 15 wins, and established new career rushing record of 5,450 yards by Dylan Minette while scoring an average of 74 points per game against their rivals from Lake Charles at their own fields. The stingy Terrible Turks wreak havoc on opposing offenses allowing 11.3 points per game and only 192 yards per game, including a dominating performance in the Superdome allowing only 140 yards and three points to Destrahan. And therefore, be resolved, the Lafayette Parish School Board hereby expresses its congratulations and appreciation to the coaches and players of Acadiana High for their accomplishments. And be it finally resolved, the Lafayette Parish School Board declares January 10, 2020 as Acadiana Reckon Rams Football Day.
Board members, if y'all come up, we'll take a picture. Coach Jeffers is going to present a framed resolution to Coach McCullough, to Principal If we could get a word from Principal Lejeune and Head Coach Matt McCullough. Go ahead, Mr. Lejeune. Are we on? We're good?
On behalf of Acadiana High School faculty, staff, students, and administration, I want to thank the school board, Mr. Lachale, who I will publicly thank for him being the voice of the Rams this year. Outstanding job as usual. If we can give him a round of applause.
And then Ms. Mary Morrison, also one of our school board members.
We ought to be all right. We got the president and the vice president now representing Acadiana High, so we should be fine.
Good hands.
And I'd also like to thank Ms. Trossclaire, of course, Mr. Touche, Ms. Gardner, and Mr. Rabble. Gave us all support throughout the year. It's very nice to know when I make a phone call or I need something, they always help me out, so I do appreciate that very much. And I'd like to, of course, congratulate our players. They work from August to December, seven days a week. They play at a high level, but not only good players, but they're outstanding students, and they also just good people. So we really, they really represent the school, the community, in a very positive way. And that is, I am very proud to be the principal and represent an organization like that. So they're an outstanding group. And the coaches, I say this all the time, I think all the time that we're the most prepared group of players in the state. We win a lot of games from Monday through Friday at practice time. I appreciate the job they do. They work hard in the classroom up until 2:30, and then they go out on the football field and do their second job. So Coach McCullough and the other coaches that are here, thank y'all very much for representing the school. So guys, again, congratulations. I appreciate all the support from the school board, and go Rams. Thank y'all.
I'd like to say the same thing. Thanks to the school board for everything, and also just, I'm extremely proud of this group of players. You know, really, we started working last January to get to this point, and they have worked extremely hard throughout the summer, of course, all the way from August to December. And, you know, you can't win at that level without great support from your administration and Mr. Lejeune, and of course, our assistant principals do a great job. And then I've said this a bunch also, I think we got the best assistant coaches in the state. You know, to get to this point, we got to work 112 days straight, Monday through Sunday, when you finish with the state championship game, and that's tough. And they did a tremendous job. And again, we appreciate everything that the school board did for us, and just enjoyed the year and proud of our players. Thank y'all very much.
On this motion, any more public comment? Any board member comment? Now y'all know I got something to say. And as president, I think the reason they voted me president, as president, you run the meeting, and you have very few opportunities to comment, and they figured out a way to throttle me. But tonight, I'm going to open up to the players. The seniors were invited tonight. We're going to have an award ceremony in April where we'd like the whole team, coaches, parents, everybody to come so that we can honor the whole team. The boardroom is just not big enough. These group of young men, take this back to your fellow teammates. I don't think any one of you is perfect, but as a team, you were perfect. You are the first. You did it in the 50th year of Acadiana. It is our 50-year anniversary. It is the golden anniversary. Old gold, the proper gold. Coach, I never heard Coach ask y'all once to go 15-0. He asked you to go 1-0. That's all he'd do when he challenged y'all and motivated y'all to go 1-0. Just so happens, he did it 15 consecutive weeks. And let me tell you something, young men, to do what y'all did over that timeframe, that focus, the character, the work ethic, it's impressive. I don't think you realize it yet. You will as you grow old and go through life. It's not that easy. You did it. You dominated. I mean, the Veer Machine could have won a state title by themselves. The Terrible Turks could have won a state title by themselves. You combined it. I've seen many games since 1971. I've never seen a season like this. Congratulations to you, Coach McCullough. This team, this team has Coach McCullough all over it. Not a lot of people know you were our quarterback in '98, '99. You had a spirit, a drive, and a fight in you. You never gave up. You took us to the quarters in '99. I think that's when this run truly started. This team is a direct reflection of you and your hard work, your character, your ethics. You're in your second year, you're 26-2. You followed the great Ted Davidson and didn't blink. But you were our quarterback. You are a Ram. One day, I'll explain to my fellow board members the family tree of how it all started. Principal Lejeune, as the leader of our school, I believe success breeds success. Your work ethic, your emphasis put on student-athlete, the job you're doing raising Acadiana academically, just your staff, your faculty, and everyone involved, it's a great reflection, and I know your people love working for you. And a lot of the success starts at the top. You don't take any credit, you don't want any credit. You're probably a little uncomfortable with me saying this, but you are the perfect principal for our school. You are the perfect head coach. Your staff is outstanding. I know the time they put in. When you're as close to the program as I am, they put in a lot of hours. These guys go above and beyond. And to the players, there's many words we could use, but congratulations. You are the perfect Acadiana Reckon Ram football team. Friday is your day. Enjoy it. Please make sure everyone gets a copy of the resolution. That's just a little token of our gratitude, and thank you for letting me be a part of it. I really do appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Nine, four, none against.
The motion passes unanimous. And look, in my first night, I want to, it's been used once, but I like to use it in the words of my good friend, the honorable Tommy Angel. If any of you have another meeting that you need to attend, feel free to go now. You can go. Now's your chance. If you want to stay, you're welcome to. Next item on the agenda that was pulled is 3.1, Adoption of Resolution 01-20-1970, Recognizing Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Holiday. Mr. Broussard?
Mr. President, motion to accept the Resolution 01-20-1970, and allow me to read the resolution.
Second. We have a motion by Ms. Angel, seconded by Ms. Angel, that the board adopt Resolution 01-20-1970, Recognizing Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Holiday. Mr. Broussard?
To recognize Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Holiday and to celebrate his contribution to our one nation. Whereas contributions of Dr. Martin Luther King have had a significant impact on the civil rights movement of the United States. And whereas all people of all creeds, colors, ethnic backgrounds, and social economical levels can benefit from the principle that Dr. King preached. And whereas, in this time of increasing violence, Dr. King's emphasis on nonviolence and calls for peace are even more poignant. And whereas, in this time when many are again attempting to focus on a necessity and race as primary consideration, the message of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. that people should not be judged by the color of their skin, but by the content of their character, can and should provide enlightened guidance. And whereas, in this time when so many seem determined to tear apart the fabric of our society, Dr. King's plea for all Americans to transcend the things which separate and divide us so that we might reach that spiritual plateau where we can celebrate our common humanity assumes an even greater urgency. And whereas, in this time when so many choose to criticize and belittle this country, Dr. King's reference to America and the magnificent words of the Constitution of the Declaration of Independence, mass positive ideas devoted to the embrace and good ideas enthusiastically to be pursued can and should provide refreshing insight into the wonder and glory of our nation. And whereas, students and the general public will be able to participate in a variety of activities sponsored by the Lafayette Martin Luther King Holiday Committee. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Lafayette Parish School Board does hereby support January 20, 2020, the national holiday honoring Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., and directs our administrators and teachers to remember this famous American through appropriate classroom and school activities which focus upon his dream and unity and brotherhood of all Americans. I, the undersigned Secretary-Treasurer of the Lafayette Parish School Board, do hereby certify that the above and foregoing is a true copy of the resolution adopted at its regular board meeting of January 8, 2020, at which time my quorum was present, and that same is in full force, signed by the Secretary-Treasurer, Ms. Armada Trossclaire.
Thank you, Mr. Broussard. Any public comment on this resolution? Any board member comment on this resolution? Ms. Morrison?
I just wanted to share recently, I'm not sure if you know, that the Diocese of Lafayette, they choose two recipients that represents a church for the Dr. Martin Luther King Award. And I want to say I am honored, along with my husband, that we were chosen this year by the Diocese of Lafayette. by the Diocese of Lafayette and St. Martin de Porres to receive the Martin Luther King Award. We have received several awards and recognitions, but this award, it really is in a class by itself. So it's going to share that with you guys. Thank you.
Congratulations, Ms. Morrison. Well deserved, well deserved. Mr. Broussard?
Yes. I agree with you, Ms. Morrison. Back in earlier years, back some 20 years ago, I was a recipient of the Martin Luther King Award and it is a great honor that your community votes you. That award being that you are a member of the community and practice your faith. That's what it honors.
Any more board member comment? Madam Secretary, I'll call for the vote. Motion passes. Next item pulled was 3.3, General Fund Budget Revision Request for Athletic Costs Center 1456. Dr. Aguilar?
Thank you. I just had a couple of questions about this agenda item. I'd like Coach Jeffers to come up and-
Mr. President, I think we need a motion on the floor.
We'll need a motion, Dr. Aguilar.
Okay. I move that we approve this particular agenda item.
We have a motion to approve, seconded by Mrs. Centany.
Yeah.
That the board approves a budget revision increase to the Materials and Supplies Budget Line item in athletic costs in a 1456 in the amount of $35,000 thereby providing $5,000 to the seven high schools that have athletic programs. The contingency budget line item will be used to fund this increase.
So Mr. Jeffers, I guess I'd like a little bit of clarity on what exactly is the need for this $35,000 at this point in the school year, particularly since this money is coming out of the contingency budget, which if this is approved by the board, will leave a balance in that budget of $15,000 for the remainder of the academic year. So just give us some clarity on why and what will the schools be doing with this $35,000?
Yes, sir. The money will be used to do what's called reconditioning on helmets. That has to be done every two years. The cost per helmet is about $52 from a coach that I spoke to recently and that cost is up $15 per helmet over the last two years. So it's more or less to try to help free up some budget room in their athletic centers for other needs that they need going into the next football season.
Any more questions?
No, thank you.
Any public comment? Any board member comment? Ms. Laboo?
So I'm clear. It says, it really means the football program? Or will it be used for all athletic programs?
That would be at the discretion of the school. David Twitter obviously does not have football. So they could use that for baseball batting helmets, softball batting helmets, soccer equipment.
Okay, so that was just an illustrative example, not, thanks all. Okay, thank you.
Safety related.
Yeah.
It was my main reason for putting it on the agenda. It's an agenda item with my name on it. It's to refurbish over 100 helmets at Acadiana, you know, concussion protocols and the safety, the safety of the students. It gets, it gets pretty, it gets pretty expensive and that's one of the reasons Acadiana would use it. But I mean, each school, it's the materials or supplies, how they see fit.
It's discretionary. Okay, great, thank you.
Any more board member comment? Hearing none. Madam Sec-, Mr. Broussard?
Yes. It's the, I understand every, every high school does not have a football program. The decision-making person, is that solely the principal overall or the athletic director or the coaches of the, of the program? Who makes that decision as to how the money is to be distributed among the athletic program?
That would be a collaborative effort between the athletic director, the administration at the school, and the coaches, however they see fit, what their needs are.
Yes.
Any more board member comment?
So Nick, is this an annual expense for the schools? Does a helmet need to be reconditioned annually?
Every other year. Basically, a representative comes in from one of the local sporting goods companies. He goes through every helmet that is in their equipment room. He evaluates, there's a 10-year shelf life. So he identifies the ones that have to be removed, that are not allowable for play, and then he will go through. And in the reconditioning, what they do is they repaint it, they check the padding that's inside, they check the face mask, the screws, the shell of the helmet, things of that nature.
So like at Acadiana High School, do all 100 helmets need to be reconditioned this year?
They are, I think, planning on doing that this year, but from year to year, no it is not, but there's a percentage of them. Most programs try to stagger it, if that makes sense, so that they do not have to pay for 100 helmets in one year. So they may do 50 one year, 50 the next year, or 25 one year, 25 the next year, based on the number of players that they have and the need for the equipment.
Now remember, Dr. Aguilar, Acadiana probably has over 150, 160 helmets. We're just using, you have freshman JV varsity, so-
I understand. I think it would be a good idea in the budget process to maybe have the board consider allocating a fixed amount of money for helmet retrofitting if this is an annual or semi-annual or biannual event and it's important and the schools don't have the resources to do this. We need to probably put it in the budget as opposed to pulling money out of contingency as a solution to this problem.
We do do it annually for the middle schools currently and I would love to see that be something that we do with the high schools as well. We do 20 helmets per middle school per year.
Any more questions for Mr. Jeffers? Any more board member comments? Hearing none. Madam Secretary, I'll call for the vote. Motion passes. Next item pulled, 3.4, Discussion and Our Action Concerning the Notice of Vacancy and Solicitation of Applications for Superintendent of Schools. Mrs. Centany?
Mr. President, I move that the board establish a post office box at the Bertrand Post Office for submission of superintendent, superintendent application packets.
We have a motion by Mrs. Centany, seconded by Ms. Angell, that the board authorize the creation of a post office box at the Bertrand location. Any public comment on this motion? Any board member comment? Mrs. Centany?
I'll just make the comment that this is the first of a series of motions that the attorney has given to us, that, things that we need to decide. So I'm going to just suggest what I think is the right course of action. I will not take any offense whatsoever if anybody has a different idea of the way we should go. For instance, one of the next ones is going to be the date that the packets must be postmarked in order for us to accept the application. So if you think it is too long of a process, too short of a process, or whatever it is, please feel free to make suggestions to the contrary as we move forward.
Any other board member comment on the motion? Create a post office box at the Bertrand location? Hearing none. Madam Secretary, I'll call for the vote, please.
Which one? Bertrand and Banks? Thank you. Sorry, we keep switching it up on you.
Motion carries. Mrs. Centany?
Oh, evidently my laptop has locked up and I can't read what I wrote, so. Well, I think I have that email on my phone while we try to get the laptop to restart, so. I believe the next one is, Mr. President, I move that the board accept superintendent application packets postmarked dated no later than February 28, 2020, and that all applications be collected from the designated post office box at one time by Mr. Lachey and Ms. Morrison on March 10, 2020.
Have a motion?
Second.
Have a motion by Mrs. Centany, seconded by Ms. Morrison. Soon as the motion comes up, I'll read it again.
That the board accept superintendent application packets postmarked dated no later than February 28, 2020, and that all applications be collected from the designated post office box at once by Mr. Lachey and Ms. Morrison on March 10, 2020.
Thank you, Mrs. Centany. Any public comment on this motion? Any board member comment?
I've got more, but I'll just say, this is just the end of February that gives us roughly six weeks from today to, for the notice to be out and to be advertised, for people to submit their applications, and then another 10 days for the, if they're postmarked by the 28th, to arrive at the post office box. Certainly open to suggestions, but I'll point out, Mr. Lachey told me that this is basically the process we used 10 months ago, for whatever that's worth.
Following the same protocol. Any board member comment? Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote. Motion carries. Once again, Mrs. Centany?
Okay, I move that the required qualifications for superintendent include that he or she be certified or eligible for immediate certification as confirmed by the Louisiana Department of Education as superintendent of schools in the state of Louisiana pursuant to state law and Lafayette Parish School Board policy, and that an applicant must meet the qualifications for the position at the time of application, with the time of application to be interpreted as March 10, 2020.
We have a motion by Mrs. Centany, seconded by Ms. Angell. Any public comment on the motion? Any board member comment, questions? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote.
Nine for, none against.
Motion carries. Mrs. Centany, I'll call on you once again.
Mr. President, I move that the advertisement for the position of superintendent state that the superintendent's salary will be negotiated by the board.
Motion by Mrs. Centany, seconded by Ms. Laboo?
Morris.
Oh, Ms. Morris, I'm sorry. I looked, I'm sorry. Ms. Morris?
Son.
Morrison? Last meeting, it was Smith Mason I messed up on. Motion by Mrs. Centany, seconded by Ms. Morrison. Vice President Morrison.
That's right.
Any public comment on the motion? Any board member comment on the motion? Hearing none.
Nine for, none against.
Motion passes. Mrs. Centany, once again?
Mr. President, I move that the board advertise the vacancy and solicit applications for the position of superintendent as follows. On at least January 12, 2020, and January 26, 2020, in the Daily Advertiser, Baton Rouge Advocate, the Acadiana Advocate, and the New Orleans Advocate, on the LPSS website through February 28, 2020, with the Louisiana School Board Association and the Louisiana Association of School Superintendents through February 28, 2020.
Second.
We have a motion by Mrs. Centany, seconded by Ms. Morrison. Any public comment? Any board member comment or question? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. Madam Secretary? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. Madam Secretary?
The screen's not up?
Still not up. Item is not coming up on board docs. We'll just go ahead and do a, uh, voice vote. All those in favor say aye. All those in favor say no. Ayes have it. Motion pass. Mrs. Centany?
Mr. President, I move that the board authorize general counsel to contact and coordinate with one or more individuals outside of the district to open and review the applications to check qualifications.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Centany, seconded by Ms. Morrison. Any public comment? Any board member comment?
Uh, I have no suggestion either way.
You have any suggestions, Ms... Dr. Chassault?
I believe Ms. Thibodeau contacted, uh, some of her colleagues in St. Martin and Vermillion Parish last year.
Any more board member comment or questions? If you're ready, Madam Secretary, I'll call for the vote. If not, we'll do a voice vote.
Nine four, none against.
Motion passes. Next item pulled was 3.5 in the facilities. Discussion and/or action concerning approval of bids for running tracks at three high schools. Mr. Angel?
Based on the, uh, recommendation of our staff and the engineers, I'd like to move that we in fact, uh, award the bid to the lowest bidder.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Angel, seconded by Mrs. Centany, that the board authorize the staff to award a low bid to J.C. Construction LLC for $3,390,000 for the all-weather running tracks at Acadiana High, Carron Crow High, and Como High in accordance with the Louisiana Public Bid Law and Purchasing Procedures and Guidelines. Is there any public comment on this item? Any board member comment or questions? Dr. Chassault?
Uh, really quickly, I believe Billy might be able to answer it. Billy, um... I have an idea where the initial number for this item came up, uh, the 2.4 million. Who typically comes up with this allocation for us? Like, if we decide we'd like to build something, who decides on what number we're gonna allocate? Because we've kinda gotten into the weeds lately with an allocated number always being lower than what I would assume it would be. Like, some professionals gonna come up with the number. Like, for instance, it was 2.4 million, and then they came back and said, "Hey, we need another 1.75 million," and it took us to, I think it was like 4.15. Like, who's coming up with the initial numbers?
Well, uh, typically for projects, the estimates either come from, uh, engineers or architects. Uh, in the... the specific project that, uh, you've asked about, I think the... the issue, uh, that would explain the... the increase is the scope of the project. When it originally started, it was gonna be a practice track. And then that got expanded, uh, through discussion, uh, to basically competition tracks, and then we added, uh, full vault pits and long jump and so on and so forth. So, the... the scope got expanded considerably from the original discussion, so...
Yeah, that makes sense.
Yes.
Yeah, that makes sense. Um, let me... Let me ask Mr. Lachele a question. I know where it all generated from. Uh, it generated from, uh, discussions we were able to have at a separate meeting. Would... would that individual company that... that kinda gave us the ballpark... ballpark figure in the first place, would they not be able to do this particular type of project? Like, in your... well, let me ask you this. In your opinion, do you think the figure that they gave us was for our practice track? Or was it that company that just do it that much cheaper?
No, it was... it was for... it was not for a complete competition track.
Okay.
And, uh, they're at...
Yeah, that's good enough.
They actually didn't get the bid.
Yeah, oh, no, I... I know. I was just... I was just wondering, 'cause I know they gave the initial round about 800, 900 grand, and then for it to get to a million and 1.21, and we're at 4,400,000 for three tracks.
Right.
But I... I know it costs a lot of money. All right, thanks. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Any more board member comment? Ms. Laboue?
Uh, I know in speaking to the engineer and looking at his opinion that it could be a, you know, 150,000-plus more in his opinion than what is actually the bid. How do we... you know, what if... if that discrepancy does arise, are we prepared to... do we hold any of that additional funds, I guess, aside in case that construction project runs over? How do we deal with that if we do run into that issue?
That would be a question for Mr. Guidry.
Mr. Guidry?
Yes, so, uh, we have contingency funds, uh, set aside for all the projects within this fund. Uh, and then, uh, so you have those funds that would be available. Uh, right now, the balance is 216,000, so not a significant number when you... when you consider, uh, the projects, uh, that are in this fund. However, we have multiple projects that are ongoing within this fund. So, any of these come in under budget, uh, any remaining funds would be transferred to that contingency, uh, and that would... that number would grow, uh, in that situation. If some of these other projects, uh, come in over budget as we move closer towards the end, it would have the opposite effect on that contingency fund.
Right.
So, uh, it would come from the contingency fund, and then to go beyond that, at this point, we really can't say if, uh... We're not aware of anything of any of the projects that would indicate that we're gonna, uh, need additional funding overall. But in... in the event that we did, uh, then we would look to one of the other bond funds that... uh, whose contingency funds are, uh, higher, uh, and, uh, utilize those funds to complete, uh, any of these projects that would require additional funding.
Okay, thank you. And then one more question, just for my, um, edification. Why are we bidding out all three together instead of just doing them separately? So that we don't have that issue of running into, and, you know, an overflow on, you know, a huge, large project versus individual projects that we will have, you know, a smaller contingency need if... if we do go over... over budget?
I... I think the benefit, uh, comes from, uh... But when you... when you group them, there's a potential, uh, for savings. Uh, but I would defer to Mr. Bordelone. Uh, is that correct? Yes. Uh, since they're in the area, you know, their equipment is in the area, uh, it's not a matter of setup, tear down, in terms of equipment, so on and so forth. Uh, they're here, uh, and so there are some savings that they recognize that can be passed on, uh, in the bid process.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any more board member questions or comments? Madam Secretary, I'll call for the vote.
Nine four, none against.
Motion carries. Next item. Let me get to it. 3.13, Discussion and/or Action Concerning Proposals for Internet Services. Mrs. Centany?
Mr. President, I move that the board reject all proposals for RFP 42-20 for Internet services due to evaluation error and authorize the reissuance of revised RFP Number 5120 as attached in the Public Content Section of this agenda item with the following changes. In Section 2.1.4, First Paragraph, Fifth Bullet, insert "or other public bodies" between system and "for." Replace the Second Paragraph of Section 2.1.4 with "The table must include the name of the school system or other public body to which the Internet service was provided and the total number of sites served by the vendor." In Section 3.3, add "or other public bodies" to the second scoring criterion description.
We have a motion? Motion by Mrs. Centany, seconded by Mr. Angel. Is there any public comment on this motion? Any board member comment on this motion? Mrs. Centany?
I'll give the explanation. Um, so basically, we had a, uh, an organization who wished to bid on this contract, who, uh, did not have any public school system in Louisiana experience, but had significant governmental experience, serving a... a great number of sites. And so, all this does is, uh, allows them to get credit for their institutional and governmental knowledge and experience without penalizing the other bidders who do have public school system experience.
Thank you, Mrs. Centany. Any other board member comment or questions? Hearing none, Madam Secretary, I'll call for the vote.
Nine four, none against.
Motion carries. The final agenda item, 3.14, Discussion and/or Action Concerning Proposals for Wide-Area Network Services. Mrs. Centany?
Mr. President, I move that the board rejects all proposals for RFP Number 43-20 for Wide-Area Network Services due to evaluation error and authorize reissuance of revised RFP Number 52-20 as attached in the Public Content Section of this agenda item with the following changes. In Section 2.1.4, First Paragraph, Fifth Bullet, insert "or other public bodies" between system and "for." Replace the Second Paragraph of Section 2.1.4 with "The table must include the name of the school system or other public body to which the Internet service was provided and the total number of sites served by the vendor." I apologize, I believe I misspoke just now. Instead of Internet service was provided, WAN service was provided, and the total number of sites served by the vendor. In Section 3.3, add "or other public bodies" to the second scoring criterion description.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Centany, seconded by Ms. Morrison. Any public comment on this motion? Any board member comment on this motion? Hearing none, Madam Secretary, I'll call for the vote.
Nine four, none against.
Motion carries. That concludes our agenda for this evening, ladies and gentlemen. I call this meeting adjourned.
Good job.
I like it.
Dr. Chassault, how did I do?
You did a great job.
15 and 0.